Your seats. I am Mayor Donald T. Lopez, Village of Los Ranchoes to Albuquerque, and I want to welcome everybody to our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. And I want to make a statement before I gavel the meeting to order. If you wish to speak or comment on certain items on the agenda, you should have signed up prior to speak prior to the meeting. The sign-up sheets are at the entrance. This will be your last opportunity to sign up. Only those individuals who have signed up will be allowed to speak. I'm gaveling the meeting to order. The time is 7:00 P. M. This meeting is streamed on the Village website. The public can also participate via Zoom. Instructions and overall public participation guidance for commenting is listed on the website and on page five of the meeting packet. The Village of Los Ranchoes is providing the ability for the public to participate in hybrid meetings. As with any application, digital service, or software, the opportunity for failure can occur. Therefore, the Village is not responsible for the inability to connect to the meeting either by Zoom meeting link or viewing via live stream. The meeting video and audio is recorded and will be available online after the meeting on the Village website. At this time, I'd like to call the roll. Mayor Protem and Trustee Sandra Pacheco.
Present.
Trustee Benavides.
Here.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Radnovich.
Here.
Thank you. If everybody would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item four is approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve or amend the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I need a second.
A second.
I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll, call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'm going to move to item five, general public comment. Participants wishing to speak on topics that do not appear on the agenda will be given three minutes. No action can occur on these items. Danielle, please proceed by calling up individuals that signed up for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Trustees. Our first individual is Loretta Chavis-Smith. If you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Loretta Chavis-Smith. I live at 536 Chavis Road, Los Ranchoes, 87107. Good evening, Trustees and Mayor. And congratulations to Ms. Danielle. Is that what you're going over there for?
Good.
Okay. Real quick, I just wanted to know, or I'm going to make a comment. I'm looking at our board here, and this is our village. This is our roads, right? What's this?
That was put on there five years ago. Don't worry about that right now. Don't even worry about it, okay?
Oh, okay. I was just, it just looked totally out of place on our roads.
It was put there five years ago, and it should be taken off. We haven't come up with any ideas on what we're going to do there. So just ignore that.
Oh, okay. I was, because people come in here and look at our board and...
In fact, I want to make sure it gets taken off.
Because I was asked a couple of questions about that particular... George, you're going to hurt it. Thank you. That's all I, I was just asking about that because I was asked about it. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Loretta. Next up, Mayor and Trustees, we have Mr. Joe Craig. If you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Joe Craig, 505 Calle del Pajerito Northwest, President of Friends of Los Ranchoes. Good to see you all again. Thank you all for coming. This is always an important meeting. I want to comment on our budget meeting that we had. There was a statement, or a couple of statements particularly that talked about the Friends of Los Ranchoes help that we did with open space. We, as far as I know, we do not have a master plan for the Agranature Center. Trustee Lewis was one of the founders of that. It's been a great group. I've been on it. We do not have a master plan, as far as I know, for our Agranature Center. As far as I know, we do not have a master plan for our Del Norte Open Space. And we're going to talk about that, I think, further. We need a definition, as of ask, in the past, of open space. I think that is an important job for the trustees to provide for us. Burnley County, who has been a great partner in our open space acquisition, has a good definition. Maybe we shouldn't accept that. Secondly, I've got a letter from the mayor, from his personal attorney, on a variety of items. I would suggest to the trustees that you not only look at a trustee's attorney, but you look at personal attorneys. There's a lot of things going on in our village right now that are extremely important. I won't make any more comment on that. That is a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mayor and Trustees, with that, there is no more public comment.
Forgot. The Village of Los Ranchoes Financial Audit, fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. We have Audrey Hadamio from the Hadamio Accounting Group, LLC, parentheses, JAG. She will be presenting our principal audit and also a supplemental audit. And Audrey, please explain to the folks, you know, here tonight and also that may be on Zoom, why the special audit is being presented. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Trustees and everyone. We should have, yes, we do have the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2022, up on the screen. And so we will go over that first. And then we do have some supplemental work and a related letter that we will present as well. And that related to the consideration of compliance in relation to the Village Center project.
Ms. Hadamio, before you go on, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. So Audrey Hadamio, and I actually live in Edgewood, New Mexico. So, all right. So let's go ahead and, trustees, are there any questions right off that you have on the audit that I should address?
I need to just keep it on. We've gone directly to the financial position of the village, which is presented on page four.
Sure.
There, there's a financial highlight section. That's probably a very important piece of it.
Sure.
And then whether or not there were any findings.
Okay.
That's my principal goal.
Okay. And then I will stand for questions, so...
Of course.
Okay. So if we could jump down to, I'm not sure who's controlling the PDF. Okay. All right. So we'll scroll down to the, basically, the balance sheet. I don't know exactly what page it is. Mayor says it's page four. No. I don't know. Is there a way I can scroll or no? Okay. Do we have a hard copy here?
Right here.
The PDF, the PDF may be a little...
Here, this is, this is the financial section that I'm, that I'm talking about. That paragraph right there.
Okay, page four. Here we go. Yes. So financial highlights of the village. And if, I'm not sure if you're able to make that bigger or not, but that's fine. I think I can read it. The tax revenues increased 941,000, or approximately 25% from the prior year. The village's expenses decreased approximately 8% from the prior year, or 343,000. And the net position, which is also, it's, it's like fund balance or equity of an entity, was increased by 2.1 million, a 5% increase for the fiscal year. So this first section is the management's discussion and analysis. This, these financial statements may be found on the state auditor's website. And below this, we have the various statements, the balance sheets, income statements of the village. We have the footnotes and many, many, many schedules in the back. And then toward the very end, we report out the great news, no findings from last year or this year. So excellent news to report. Great job to the administration. We always thank Tammy, of course, for all of her hard work and everyone else that has assisted us. So the village does have a clean audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that an auditor can give. And having no findings is exceptional, actually. So it's hard to really get through an audit without at least one or two findings. So it's a very good year, last year as well.
I would like to point out that I've been mayor five and a half years. In four of those five years, we've only had one finding. And that was from the Enser Museum, which was something that happened in 2015 that I had nothing to do with. So thank you.
Sure. Very clean audits.
Thank you.
So I'm happy to go over anything in the financials that the trustees may want.
Do the trustees have questions on our main audit at all?
There's a lot of information in there. Good bedtime reading, I always say. So, well, if you do, or if anything comes up throughout the year, I just want to reassure you guys, you can reach out directly to JAG at any time with questions or concerns. And one of our audit standards is to just ensure that there's good two-way communication with the governing body as well. And so that's why the state audit rule requires us to come present to you and then make sure that you have, you know, our contact information and, and anything that you might need. So we can go to the next letter. I think it's a different file.
Do we actually have that available for Kiko to show on the screen?
We only received the original audit.
I guess, I guess we don't have it, but do you have it?
Okay. I do not have it right here with me in this room. I have it in the car. I could, I mean, you could go on and I could come back, or, or I could just explain.
I'd, I'd like for you to explain. And then what we're going to do is you're going to provide that supplemental audit to our clerk tomorrow.
Okay.
And then at that point, that supplemental audit will be placed on our village website so that everybody in the village can see it.
Okay.
So explain how it came about and what the findings, the critical findings, were, just based, based on what you know.
Okay. And Mayor, I do know that, I don't know if clerk or anyone has access to your email, but it is in there. If they searched my name, they would be able to bring it up.
Okay.
But just in essence, the extra work that we did was because of the issue of possible anti-donation, violation of the state constitution for the, I guess, the, what I would call trade for the $1 for land for the developer doing the Village Center project. And so we took a close look at that, looked at anti-donation, looked at case law. We are not attorneys, so we make that very clear. It's not a legal opinion, okay? But having, you know, 25 years of doing this and being a certified municipal officer myself, I've seen a lot of different things. And within the letter, we're able to kind of list out all of the different... It, it's basically an exchange transaction. So with anti-donation, what you really need to be worried about is when you're using public funds that would benefit an individual or an entity with nothing in exchange, where there's no incidental benefit to the public or the community at all. And that's not the case here. So we just lay out the history of the project, the decisions that were made by mainly previous administrations. I mean, this went through many, many different governing bodies and mayors. And so, and administrations as well. And so we list all of that out. And then our conclusion, for what it's worth, is, is that there was no violation of the MRA or the anti-donation clause of the state constitution.
Thank you, Audrey. Do the trustees have any questions about the supplemental audit, even though you haven't seen it? But you will see it, okay? And so will everybody else.
Definitely.
Well, Audrey, I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Feel free to reach out if you do.
Okay. We're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Item seven. 7A is minutes. March 8, 2023, regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes for March 8, 2023, or if there might be any suggestions, corrections.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
Of the March 8?
Of the March 8. Sorry, I was trying to get there. Of the March 8, 2023 meeting.
I need a second.
A second.
I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll, call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
I have one change in, on page, let's see... 78. And it's about, it's at the very end of the second paragraph up from the bottom. And where it says, "And I would like to return with some in the future," the word "ideas" is missing.
Okay. Which line?
That would be line 400.
Okay. Ideas. Very good. Any further corrections to the minutes of the March 8, 2023 meeting? If not...
Yes, one other, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
On line 522. Yonemotos is spelled incorrectly.
You're right. Yonemotos. Thank you very much. With that, the motion carries unanimously. I don't think there's any other corrections to the minutes. Thank you. Item eight is departmental reports. Departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect all the activities as listed. Ms. Rinaldi is excused from tonight's meeting. If there are any questions staff cannot answer from her report, we will follow up with her and respond accordingly. If the governing body has questions on the departmental reports, we will have each trustee ask all of their questions before we move to the next trustee. Let's start with Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have questions, I think, for almost each of you. In your report, Mayor, you talk about the grocery receipts tax. I just wanted to clarify, I think, for, for the audience as well as ourselves, that that did not pass, correct?
That's right. In fact, the governor vetoed any cut in, in the, in the tax for GRT. So that means our grocery receipts tax will not change.
Excellent. And then you, you went on to talk about some of the highlights. I also think it would be great just to kind of go through those and how they might affect us.
Sure.
As a village, if you don't mind.
Right.
So if you just want to kind of just give us a little bit of...
Well, the, the bottom line is the village did not get money for roads like we had asked for. Each, I'm sorry. The legislature and the New Mexico Department of Transportation wanted to have a bill, I think it's called Senate Bill 49, that would be, basically, the motor vehicle excise tax. They were going to move money from that, that was all going to the general fund, into money that NMDOT could make available to small communities and communities throughout the state for road funds. The governor vetoed that bill. Even though every town in New Mexico, every, all of New Mexico Department of Transportation leadership, you know, testified for that bill. I testified for that bill. So for whatever reason, that was vetoed. And so I think one of the reasons the legislature may not have provided as much money for roads, not only to Los Ranchoes, but all, many other towns in New Mexico, they were told during the legislature that the motor vehicle excise tax bill would take care of it. It's not true anymore. Not going to work out. And so basically, I think the legislature did a great job. Other than that one bill, there was an awful lot of bill for water type projects, levee restoration, a secias. There's money also provided for open space acquisition. And so we got some of that money. So I think at, at the end of the day, the village actually fared fairly, fairly well. The 1.25 million that the village got from the legislature was the most that I have ever gotten as mayor of Los Ranchoes. In fact, I can go back 30 years. No administration in this village has, has, village has ever gotten more than a million dollars. So that's, that's just the way it is. And I want to put it that way. So if there's any other specific questions that I can answer, but the most disappointing part of the legislature was the motor vehicle excise tax veto. Because that's, that's going to make us wait a few more years to get money for our projects.
Got it. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Let's see. Also wanted to congratulate Danielle for earning her certified municipal clerk as well as being nominated and elected as alternate director for District 8. Okay. Administrator Simon, these questions are for you. You talk about the outdoor kitchen at the Agranature Center. And that looks like it's coming along, and it's going to really prove very successful, I think, for not only the village, but the community at large. Are, are there any plans to hold an open house
Hey, Mayor, Trustee Pacheco. We do not have a date for a celebration as of yet, but that classroom will be completed at the end of May. And we can absolutely bring the public down to the Agranature Center, and we'll have a nice party. It's going to be a beautiful addition to the facility.
Excellent. Thank you. Also wanted to make a comment on the barn parking lot. Looks great. I, I even walked on it a little bit just to see how compacted, you know, everything was on that parking structure or the parking area. But can you remind me what we have for future funds to finish that project off?
Mayor and Trustee Pacheco, trustees, that project has been difficult because we've been getting wide disparate quotes to finish that job. There are potential historic articles, artifacts, under the barn. And so we've had to be very careful about what we do with that lot. We can't really dig down. There was one quote of a half a million dollars to, to completely resurface that in a way that was careful of the existing conditions and considering that there's no foundation at the barn. We decided to just go with what occurred this month, which was just to grade the worst part of the lot and then just put a very small layer of base course down. We're going to see how that works. We're going to see how that takes care of the drainage. And if we like what we see, we'll try to, to do the rest of it in the next fiscal year. We did get a, a fairly reasonable quote for that kind of minimal fix.
Good. I guess monsoon season will, will tell us how.
Will tell a lot.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Let's see. Edgewood Park. So in your report, you state we were, we received an additional $200,000 for Edgewood Park in capital outlay. Is this in addition to what we have received and what we, we've kind of budgeted for? And if so, how is that, how's it going to be used, I guess?
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Trustee Pacheco, trustees. We will be moving ahead with our improvements to Edgewood Park. It's just taken a back burner because we have legislative funds that we need to spend before the end of this fiscal year. So we're moving forward on some other projects, the entryway into the Agranature Center, the outdoor kitchen classroom, some other projects. We will pick up Edgewood Park this summer. And we were fortunate enough to receive $200,000 from the legislature in the form of capital outlay. We will use that money first and then the remainder with Rescue Act funds that are specifically for parks and recreation.
So we're not really adding more to our plans at Edgewood Park, or are we?
We are really only at 30% design. We still have a little ways to go. I expected to get 65% design to vet with the community before this meeting, and I just didn't get it. So we're still expecting another iteration and some finer tuned construction drawings. So once we get that, we'll vet that one more time with the community, make sure everybody's happy, go into 90 and 100% design.
Excellent. Thank you. Next one is the Los Ranchoes North Valley Art Tour. I think that's excellent. Love the idea. You mentioned that it's more than the Village of Los Ranchoes, and you mentioned it's greater North Valley. What, what do we mean by that?
Yes, Mayor, trustees. We were approached by a group of artisans. They wanted to kind of broaden what is currently the Alameda Art Tour to include Los Ranchoes artists. As soon as that happened, there were some artists on the south side of Los Ranchoes, some into the, into the city, who wanted to be included. So they kind of decided to make it a, a kind of a North Valley tour. And we're still supportive. It's mostly Los Ranchoes.
Okay. Great. Love it. Thank you. That, that was all I had for your report. Now on to Joshua's report, the Agranature Center. Joshua, this list keeps getting longer and longer of programming that's taking place at the Agranature Center. It just seems like it's growing like crazy. And, and my concern is, do we need to expand the reach of, for marketing these events? I mean, is there anything we can do as trustees and, and the governing board to, you know, I, I guess, first of all, are these educational events, are they full? Are they, you know, are you seeing good turnout? And what can we do to support you, I guess? Because you're doing such great things there.
Mayor, Trustee Pacheco, trustees. It is growing. Our, we are expanding the programming we're doing. The last workshop I did, a couple week, well, a week, a week ago, had over 40 people, and they, they are, they, they are tending to grow. This past Saturday out there, we had probably about 50 people out at the Agranature Center for a composting workshop. So they are growing as word of mouth grows. It is still topic-specific, you know? As we find, you know, as we find out what the community is interested in, and we're putting out another survey in about a week or two. We're vetting the survey right now. And then we're putting that out to kind of get more feedback from the community, from our newsletter list, the people that participate most in the Agranature Center and our programs, to find out more what people are interested in. We do market through our newsletter list, which is at over 500 people. It's almost 600 now. We also do it through social media, Instagram, Facebook. And we're able to boost those posts and boost our Eventbrite posts as well. We do pay a little bit for that. It's like if the week before a workshop or the week before an event, we pay about $8 to boost it for, and that just kind of expands the amount of people that see it so that it comes up on your page if you're scrolling and you've been interested in those kind of activities in the past. So that's kind of how we market right now. And most of it is also... And most of it is also just word of mouth. As people come to the Ag Center, they start looking for events more at the Ag Center. So it's expanding that way as well. I don't want to expand more than our capacity, of course. I don't think we have. I think we have so many great partners that we work with throughout the North Valley and Los Poblanos and Rio Grande Community Farm and RCS and MSU and all these great schools and Master Gardeners, different projects that we have, that there are so many people that donate their time to come and help us. And so that's what makes it all possible, is all the volunteers that help out and make the programming possible. Otherwise, we would farm a little bit of space and that's all we'd be able to handle. So it is because it's a community project and that's what makes it work.
Josh, may I interject very quickly? For four years, we've done AgriFutures. And the goal of AgriFutures, the vision of AgriFutures is to make the AgriNature Center property a center of excellence for sustainable agriculture. In your opinion, are we actually doing that? I think we are, but I'm asking you directly.
I think that, Mayor, trustees, I think we are doing a lot in regenerative agriculture, sustainable agriculture. There's always new areas to perform research and to provide programming. So I'm never going to say that we're there. I always think there's more that we can do and as things change and as research develops, there's more that we can try and develop. But I think we are doing as best we can and we look forward to doing more.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay, on to Director Rubin. It also appears that staff is super busy with a lot of administrative efforts and I feel like they're doing a great job. It seems like summer becomes a little more active. Obviously, people are out and things are happening. Is your staff, do you feel well positioned to kind of complete everything that is called for, I guess, throughout the village?
There's a definite need for a planner, Mayor and trustee Pacheco. We have been looking and continue to post, continue to spread the word. I've been active at UNM, spreading the word and participating in student reviews and things like that. So I think the general administrative things, the code enforcement as well, tended to with Mr. Sanchez. Ms. Austin is processing all the business applications. We're short of a planner. So there's a little gap, but we're doing our best.
And have we expanded our search? Or I mean, are we just at a point now where we're just kind of hitting up the same places? I know that you mentioned the universities. I mean, is there a way to maybe work with the architecture and planning programs to maybe groom a planner to come potentially work with us?
I've definitely worked with the department a little bit. My contacts, we've posted nationally for it, regionally, across the state. Many planners working in New Mexico would be part of the New Mexico APA, the professional organization, and there's a list served statewide. I see a lot of postings. It's not just us. So it's a little challenging to find municipal planners at the moment, both public and private sector. So we continue to search and get more creative.
Great. Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed. Okay, thank you, Director Rubin. These questions are from Maria Rinaldi and I know she's not here tonight. So Administrator Simon, I guess these will be asked of you and hopefully you can answer. If not, then we'll wait for Maria to answer. I've been thinking a lot about the extension of 4th Street and I know we don't have the funds to do it just yet and hopefully we will find those funds eventually. But I also thought, if we have even thought about an office for Maria to do outreach right on 4th Street and I know.
We have.
Have we? So we've started to think about that and identify. I know there's been a lot of questions from the public. I think it would just be a good idea maybe to look for some space for her. Let's see. That wasn't really a question. The entrance and roadway improvement project. I was just wondering if we could get just a quick kind of overview. I know that the fencing has gone up over there. Can you provide us just kind of what's the next steps?
Absolutely. Mayor, trustees, trustee Pacheco. Let's see, where did Joshua go? I'm going to have Joshua come up and give you a little bit more detail since he's down on the property every day. But we're really excited about this project and it's really coming along.
All right, Mayor, trustee Pacheco, trustees. So yeah, they have put up the temporary fencing around there. They're starting to grade and excavate a little bit of the dirt there at the entrance. They anticipate that it's only going to take them about five weeks to do this project. It should be short term. We've given them a schedule of our events so that people can get in and out at all times. They're just going to have to close it for pouring the concrete. When you just come off Rio Grande, that area, they'll have to close down for about three days. So we'll do it over a weekend. But yeah, so they're going to put in concrete just coming in about 30 feet off the roadway just so that it doesn't rut out with that gravel there that causes all the ruts. And then from there, they're leaving the planters, the stucco planters there at the entranceway. That'll all remain the same. And then they're just going to have base course for the roadway coming through, going around, coming in, going around the trees and coming out. So it's not increasing the roadway footprint in any way. It's just realigning it. And then, so we're going to leave that same gate, the same planters. The other thing that they're going to do is run conduit, underground trench conduit from where we have electricity, which is over by our equipment yard, all the way out to the entranceway. So that way they'll be able to provide lighting for the gate and for a future sign. So that's the project.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you, Joshua. Thank you, Ann. Village Center Project. Is there any way we can request just some information, kind of just an update where things are at? I don't know that we've heard anything recently.
Yes, Mayor, trustees, trustee Pacheco. We have asked for a full report. The Palanquem folks want to come next month to give a full report and there will be a lot to report on next month. As you may have noticed, they've started to go vertical on Building 1. So they will be providing a photograph or a series of photographs every single day. We're going to ask Sabrina to upload them. So it'll be like a virtual viewing platform so people can see the progress. But they're very excited. They've already got panels. They're starting, they're pouring concrete right now on Building 1. They're going to start next on Building 3. They should be finished with all the concrete by the end of next week. This week and part of next week, they will be working on closing off some of the water lines that the Water Utility Authority wanted them to kill on 4th Street, which is why there's a lane blocked there. But there will only be one lane blocked. There will never be a full blockade of 4th Street. I think that's the biggest update so far. They're starting to go vertical on Building 1.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Roadrunner, Roadrunner, roadway improvement project. Tyler Road resurfacing, excellent. I actually rode my bike down Tyler Road and made my way to Steel Bender. I should have said Hops. And I topped it off with a malt over at Busy Bee. Good plug for them. It was excellent, but the road is great. I know that there was a pre-proposal site visit with regard to the Chavish Road Multi-Use Trail Project. I'm just kind of curious what the outcomes were from that site visit. Can you?
Sure, Mayor, trustees. That was a non-mandatory pre-proposal site visit. Non-mandatory, mandatory, sorry. So anybody who wanted to submit a proposal, any of the proposers had to show up and walk the corridor. So not only did we have two firms show up, but we had our consultant on the field at the site as well as our staff member, Thomas Sanchez, and even a resident, Joe Craig, showed. So they walked the corridor, they identified the current conditions and that was all prior to submitting their proposal. Proposals were submitted and evaluated already. So we'll be bringing back to you the recommendations from that team.
Great. Thank you.
And if I could just also add, this was only for right-of-way survey.
Okay. There's still a lot more to go.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I don't see Fred here tonight.
He's not here.
Okay. I was just kind of curious what the 4th Street agreement was for the pop-up market. I don't know if we have any.
Mayor, I can handle that. We have agreements with all of the users of our facilities, including our growers market friends, the art market here at Hartnett Park. And now we have a new pop-up market at, well, it's more than just a pop-up now. It's two times a month at the parking lot, our parking lot on 4th Street. So that agreement was just assuring that they had given us all their liability insurance, that we had the terms set out, that they have so many spaces open, that they're working with the neighbors, their neighboring businesses on 4th Street and that kind of thing.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I just wanted to make a comment on, I know he had mentioned the Easter egg hunt at the park, which I think all of us have taken our kids to, which, you know, I rode by it on Easter Sunday and I could not believe the use of the park that day. I think every piece of the park was being used.
That's correct.
That day. It was just so nice to see so many people out there. And that concludes my questions. Sorry, trustees, for going on and on.
No problem. Trustee Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first questions are for you, Ann. On the 4th Street design, we talked about there being a meeting after the 30%. When is that meeting?
Yes, Mayor, trustee Lewis. That meeting has been scheduled now for May 17th. It's a Thursday night and we will be putting that on the website.
And will that be here?
It will be here in Village Hall.
Okay, thank you. I should have covered my questions on Chavish Road. Thank you. And my next questions are for Joshua. Joshua, could you educate me? In your report, you used the RAE grant several times and I have no idea what RAE stands for.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, trustee Lewis, trustees. Sorry, I should have had it written out in there at least the first time. It's a grant that we got from the Environment Department. It stands for recycling and illegal dumping. And so there's a Recycling and Illegal Dumping Act. And so from that, they give funding to people to reduce waste streams. So we collaborated with groups, the Compost Coalition around the state is what we call ourselves. So groups from Santa Fe, Albuquerque, the Pueblos and Las Cruces. And we did a grant for composting sites around the state. And we were awarded that grant. We are administering the grant and we put in the first bins there. We have people dropping off compost materials and they also can participate. It's a community composting grant. They participate once a month in composting the stuff that is brought and in exchange, they're able to take compost back to use at their homes.
Can you go, I mean, it talks about the first bin being completed. How many bins? And tell a little bit more detail about how the composting is going to work.
Sure, yeah. There's seven sites around the state. So two are in the city of Albuquerque, one is in Isleta Pueblo, one is in Las Cruces, two are in Santa Fe and then here in Los Rancho's. So the way it's modeled after a grant that was done in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. And it's, the idea of community composting is for people who either cannot compost at home but want to reduce the waste stream or businesses who want to do the same. They're able to participate by bringing their kitchen scraps and those kind of materials, food waste, to a site. But it's not just a drop-off site, it's also participatory. So you have to donate at least one hour a month to come into a community event where you help make the compost. So we were able to build these bins that are, were designed by Casey Williams here in the village who works at Farm and Table, does their farming for them and he also has his own composting business. And so they are composting bins that are developed for New Mexico because they eliminate a lot of the evaporation and which we often have trouble with compost drying out here in the Southwest. So they're pretty nice. And so he's building those at all seven sites and then we'll be able to start composting. We've already filled our first bin and had the event on Saturday. People from around came and brought their compost and participated in building the first compost pile in those bins.
Is that something people can drop off daily?
People can drop off daily. People do drop off daily. But then if you want to be able to have the exchange where you can also receive some compost for your home garden or raised bed, then we ask for an hour a month to make it a community participation.
Okay. My next question is if you could just go in a little bit more detail on the growing of Navajo corn on three acres at the Ag Center. Can you tell us a little bit more detail about that?
Sure, absolutely. So we have entered a contract with new entity, Rainbow Farms. It is, the farmer is Josh Allison Burbank. He's from the Navajo Nation. He is a professor and runs the Center for Indigenous Health, the Johns Hopkins Center for Indigenous Health here in town. And he's also a farmer. So his family, we put out an RFP and they were the awardees and they are going to do, or request for applications, I guess it was, not an RFP. So anyways, he is going to be growing his Navajo corn. He does blue corn and white corn, not at the same time because they'll cross. But one is for chicos and one is for grinding for flour. So they'll be growing some of that corn on site there. They'll plant about mid-May on that three acres. He's also going to do some melons, watermelons and a couple of other things, some peppers and stuff like that. So, but the majority will be in native corn.
Great. That is awesome. My last question is, you had the first watering. How'd it go and what's the forecast for irrigation water this year? What are you hearing?
Thank you, Mayor, trustee Lewis, trustees. Went well. We've watered on both sides. We have two different ditch riders, one on either side of the AgriNature Center, west and east. So we are on a three-week schedule. We were hoping for a two-week schedule. That's always the hope. That's historically what it's been, but this year has been like the last two years. We're on a three-week schedule and that's, the forecast is good from everyone I've talked to. The snowpack was good up in the San Juans, Southern Colorado and Northern New Mexico. So we're hoping to have water all the way through the season this year.
Great. Thank you, Josh. Mayday, my next question's for you. I thought it was. I thought it was important to maybe explain a little bit for the audience. When we talk about Thomas Sanchez and code enforcement, I like how you put in here the goal of code enforcement is compliance. Could you talk maybe a little bit about some of what he sees out there, if there anything that stands out, and then also, just a little bit how he's working towards reaching a compliance program?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and Trustee Lewis. So, I haven't seen a concentration of certain issues popping up in the village, no pattern since I've been here in particular. Some issues, I mean, it spans from some complaints about dark skies violations from individual property owners, trees or shrubs that are obstructing, you know, views or site triangles, inoperable vehicles, debris on properties, vehicles potentially being lived in, a whole host of those types of inquiries. So, a lot of what he does is responding to calls or emails, and so, he will receive the inquiry, the issue, and go out to investigate. And so, he does drive around and try to keep an eye out for any potential issues himself, but largely it is complaint-based. And when he responds, he tries very hard to initiate conversation with a property owner and talk to them about what might be an issue, what are they experiencing, trying to talk about how to resolve any potential issues. So, he is constantly trying to get in personal contact with folks. He spends a lot of his time either in person or on the phone, talking to residents, and kind of checking up on issues as they evolve. He also, you talk about compliance, as I've mentioned, so, the measurable way that this works and escalates is different levels of letters of violation, and then eventually it gets to municipal court. And so, he attempts to avoid that by helping residents solve their issues, resolve any complaints. Sometimes these come down to neighbor disputes, and so, he kind of is a mediator sometimes. And so, he'll issue a letter of violation, and, you know, if it's resolved right away, no problem, he'll check in, he'll try to follow up. Sometimes, you know, these issues, he likes to say weren't created overnight, and they don't necessarily get resolved overnight, so he works with residents quite extensively. And things do sometimes end up in court, and that's just kind of the, where it heads eventually if things are not resolved. However, as you'll see in your report that I provide, that's what I mean by letters of first violation, closed cases are addressed and resolved, you know, things that go to court, how many cases, so, that's about it. If you have any other questions, happy to answer them.
No, I think it's one of those people out there that we don't appreciate until we have a problem, and I thought it was just good maybe that people know he's out there and what he's doing and how he tries to resolve it, so thank you. All right, these questions are for Maria.
Who's not here.
Ann's here, and I know she's eager to answer them, so.
Good.
Okay, so, we've talked about the meeting being held on May 17th, that's a real critical one for me. I was interested in here on balance of Phase One funding, there was a line in there, paragon, engineering value planning study, $300. I thought that was a typo, being such a low amount, but could you tell me, you told me that was correct amount?
Yes, Mayor, Trustee Lewis, we asked RP Bohannon to do a review of the value planning report.
A peer review.
A peer review, thank you, Mayor, and he did that, he charged us for his time.
Okay, that's the meetings that were held here at the Village Hall.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I think that's all my questions, so.
Okay.
We got them covered, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lewis. Trustee Benavides.
Yes, first question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
In your report, you talked about Senate Bill 464, Agro Tourism Promotion Act, and you said this will allow the village of Los Rancho's to partner with the Economic Development Department and assist with the funding of the Agor Nature Center. How big of a deal is that, and do we write proposals, how does that work?
As I understand it, that money will become available at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then they will ask the village to prepare what amounts to a proposal for funding that we might need for the Agor Nature Center. That's what I was told. And I understand that that bill passed, I wish Kim Legant were here tonight, she could tell us for sure, but do you know, do you know if that bill was actually signed?
Mayor and Trustee Benavides, I do believe that that was signed by the governor.
Yes.
I also want to mention that all of these pockets of funding for the various agencies are available to us, and that is how we were able to receive funding for the edible trail.
Right, and that was last year, though?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's similar to that?
Okay, so I assume we have to have some ideas of what we might want to propose.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, let's see, next question. I think this is, yeah, this is Ann's report. Okay, Chavis Road, multi-use trail. You state that we will hold a public meeting to get community feedback on potential alternatives at the 30 percent design, and any idea of when that might happen?
Trustee Benavides, Mayor, Trustees, no, we have not yet gotten through the right-of-way survey, so, we have to go through that step before we go into design. Then we have to put out another RFP for a planner-designer, so, we're a little ways off.
Six months off, a year, what do you think?
I'm going to look over at my procurement officer, maybe, maybe a year.
Okay, just to, just to be realistic, that is not going to be happening in the next couple of months, I think.
Correct.
The message that we'd like to leave for the people. Okay, barn parking lot, so you were touching on this, not all of it has been graded and had a base course added, and I think you hinted that there was an issue with archaeological items that might be there, artifacts. I mean, is, do we know if that's an issue, is that really a thing, or how do we know that?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, there was a report before the barn was placed on that site, and I can share that with you.
A report done by whom?
By the State Historic Preservation Office.
I'm sorry, the State?
The State Historic Preservation Office.
Yeah, yeah, so, it's interesting, so that presents a problem with grading it?
No, it does not. It can't go down.
Mayor, Trustees, it presents a problem with digging. Anything on the surface is okay.
Okay, so I thought that was, that was an issue for us completing, adding the base course.
Funding was the issue, am I correct?
Okay.
History or Simon?
Mayor, Trustees, it's a really complex issue because if you do it sort of quote-unquote "the correct way," the way the engineers want you to do it, they want you to do like full-deep reclamation, they want you to level it, laser-level it, they want you to have real drainage, not just our sloped drain. So, we're trying it this way, we're trying it with one-third of the lot on base course and seeing what happens, seeing if it takes care of the majority of the problem. If it works, it's a low-cost solution, and we'll do the rest of it.
What depth can you grade? I'm just curious.
You're adding, you're not grading, you're grading and adding.
But still, they do, they do kind of flatten out the depressions and things like that.
I don't think we went down more than three or four inches.
Okay.
The surface.
I mean, it's kind of interesting because, you know, it's okay to drive on the artifacts, but it's not okay to grade any more than six inches, I suppose.
Correct.
You know, I mean, some of those depressions that, before we had that slightly graded and that base course added was, those were probably at least a foot deep, I would think.
There were ruts.
So, ruts, I mean, those weren't an issue, that's, I can't wrap my head around that. Okay, I'll leave it at that. Oh, so, one more thing about that, is there a map that shows where this is an issue? Is it the entire parking lot, is it all of Hartnett Park?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, it's been a while since I read that, it was in 2020 when I first started here, when I was asking the same questions, why can't we fix this problem?
Yeah.
And it seems to be primarily under the lot. They did excavate when they plumbed the bathrooms by the tennis courts, and I think that's when the trouble began.
What did they find, you know, shards or foundation, what did they find?
Maybe Trustee Radnovich has some idea.
Trustee Benavides, I just happened to look at that report in the last week, and one of our residents sent it to me, and I believe it goes, I believe the sites go all the way from the southern perimeter of Hartnett Park to actually under this building.
I think they do.
And I believe they even go north of this little driveway here that looks like a street. So, it's a fairly large area, but they've never, they've never gone much further than that first report. So, in order to do something like, say, a foundation, we would have to hire a archaeologist to go down.
Not a foundation, I was asking if they're, what did they find, are they finding shards or did they find a?
It's said in the report that I, oh, go on, sorry.
Oh, are they finding ruins, you know, structures?
They're finding both Native American and Spanish conquistadors' remains, and so, there's things like pots from Native Americans and shards, there's things like equipment and things like that from when the Spanish came through, so there's, it's multiple layers, from what I can tell.
Okay, I won't belabor the point, but so, are you saying it's okay to drive on top of all that?
We've been driving on it.
Well, I know, but is it okay?
I think it is.
All right, I mean, it's just such, it's a constraint, I want to really understand if it really is a constraint, or is it just blown out of proportion?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, I will make sure that you see that report, maybe we can make sure that Trustee Radnovich and I have the same report.
I'd be happy to send it to you.
All right, okay, so, moving on. Yeah, let's see. Oh, yeah, so Josh, so you're on a three-week schedule, that means you only get water once every three weeks?
Mayor, Trustees, yes, that's correct.
I mean, you can't grow vegetables with that, right?
That is correct, you can't grow vegetables with it, however, all of our vegetables are on drip tape, so, we're using, we're using drip irrigation that comes from our well for the vegetables. The flood irrigation on the asequias, we're using strictly for the pasture grasses.
Even, even once every three weeks is, I mean, it's a long time, even for pasture, I would say, don't you think?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, we have done it the last two years. Last year, we were on a once-a-month schedule, and it did just fine, we're not, if we were putting in new pasture, that would be a real challenge with the established roots that we have in the ground and the heavy clay soil, that it seems to retain moisture for a long time, it seems like we do okay.
Okay, and the ducks, they don't fly off? They hang out, and coyotes leave them alone?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, that's right, we have electric netting around there, which has worked with the coyotes, with the sheep, and also with the ducks, chickens, so, they're not getting into the electric fence, and.
Okay, that's it, that's the secret, electric.
That's the secret, the electric netting.
There's nothing like a little pain that makes you remember. Okay, let's see, so, page. I think that's all I have for you, Josh. Let me go to the next one. Yeah, so, I did have some questions, but that would have been for Fred maybe, Ann would like to talk about if she knows something. So, citizens' issues, raised crosswalks on Chavis, and speeding on Ranchitos Tyler and Pueblo Solano, these are, these are things that we're looking at, right? Nothing's been done, is that correct?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, Trustees, we are going to put raised crosswalks on Chavis Road.
And that'll be done prior to us redoing Chavis, right?
Correct.
And they may or may not stay, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Hold on. Might be, let's see. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Radnovich.
Let's see, my first is from the Mayor's Report, but it's actually for Danielle, congratulations, Danielle. I thought that was awesome that you got certified, and that you're doing District Eight, that's awesome. May the trustees see the plan, and this is from your report, Ann, may the trustees see the plans for the outdoor kitchen classroom as it gets developed?
Absolutely, Mayor, Trustee Radnovich will get that for you.
Thank you.
On the second page, I had the same question about the crosswalk, where is the raised crosswalk going to go?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, it will be just west of the current pedestrian crossing on Chavis Road between the Caballero neighborhoods.
Oh.
And it will be heading, it'll be right where Nabore hits Chavis Road, heading into the park.
I see, got it, okay. Let's see, on the barn parking lot, it is completed, correct? The construction of the base course?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, we completed the first third of the lot, the whole lot has not been completed.
No, I'm sorry, the phase that you were doing is completed.
Correct, it's all finished.
Yep.
Fifty-four Easter.
Yep, Edgewood Park, I have a question. The neighbors were concerned that the balloons that currently land on Edgewood Park during the balloon fiesta and at other times weren't going to fit anymore, and when I saw that we were actually enlarging the project, I got a little concerned, and so, what is happening there, will there, is it really the whole park that we're doing?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, no, it is only one place structure, a pathway into the structure, some benches, and a few trees on the far north side. We're keeping the south side by Osuna open for balloons.
Okay, so they'll be further north than the Cottonwood.
I'm pretty sure that's true.
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, we are only at 30 percent design on that, we are still making adjustments, we are hoping to get a 65 percent design that we can circulate amongst the neighbors, but we just don't have that right now.
Okay, thanks, Ann. One last thing. This is on the tree planting along the DOT, and this is, I guess for you, Josh, although it was in Ann's report. We're ready to irrigate those new plantings, I take it, that are going to be installed. What it says is, tree planting, we have applied for permission from the DOT to plant trees along the Paseo del Norte berm as a green noise barrier and beautification project. If we get to go ahead, we will begin to put irrigation, but we'll plant the trees in the fall. plant the trees in the fall. You guys are prepared to irrigate those and take care of them, and that's not adding to your load in a way that is too much?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, trustees, so the plan with that is to have a buried polyline with drip emitters at each tree, and that'll be coming off our, off the well that's over there, and we can put it on a timer. And so hopefully, once that's all installed and ready to go, it'll be, as you know, you know, minimal effort.
Perfect. Perfect. That's great. I thought the North Valley Art Tour is an awesome thing as well. That's really great. This one is Josh's, and I'm, you don't have to get up, Josh. Great work. Everyone else has said a lot, a lot about what you're doing, so good Nothing for you. I have, thank you for all your hard work, though. In, and this is Maria's. The Pueblo Solano to Village Limits portion of the final plans on page 90, it says, finalizing the 100% design task order under the retainer services agreement with BHI, including negotiating fee. We're not paying them to negotiate, are we? What is a negotiating fee?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, I'm not sure what the negotiating fee is, but it is, the point is, is that they are our on-call engineers. That's the retainer services agreement that she just refers to, and.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, this is Maida's report? Oh, this is Maria's, sorry.
No, it's Maria's report.
And, and so we are working through the final design with them. So, but we need a lot more public input. We're, we're going to reexamine the 30% design that nobody remembers that we already talked about, and we're gonna do 60% design and 90% design. So we have a lot more work to do.
I'd like to interject. There is no negotiation fee. The fee is being negotiated. That's what.
There you go. Thank you.
Then it's just not written correctly.
Thank you, Mayor. That's correct.
Let's see. Bear with me. I use my regular computer instead of the iPad because I don't like the iPad. Under the Pueblo Solano to Village Limit, it says $27 million, et cetera. On the second page, I believe, it says federal COVID relief funds are funding secured for the Four Street Project. How are we using COVID relief funds to fund the Four Street Project?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, that funding source became available to all communities in New Mexico, and we applied and we received them.
It's got nothing to do with COVID relief?
The funding was available to communities to complete projects that they wouldn't otherwise have been able to complete.
Under Phase One, it says, and this, this seems to be under the, the Pueblo, the Four Street Project, but it's talking about the design of signage. Oh, that's why. Yes. Who's making the decisions on that signage and what it looks like and where it is and all that?
Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, that's a great question. We haven't really started that project yet. We have asked Greg Miller with Land, I believe is the new name of his firm, to come up with a design that is a template that we can use throughout the village. We have not even started that, but happy to share those plans with you as they emerge.
Thanks, Anne. Let me just continue on here. Can you say who the two firms, the surveying firms were that attended the pre-proposal meeting for Chavez Road?
The two that attended? Mayor and Trustee Radnovich, there was a sign-in sheet. I don't have it available, but I can provide that. There were more than two, I believe, in addition to a couple of residents, but I'll be happy to share that once we get through this process.
Fred, I had one. Oh, raised crosswalks, got through that one. Done. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move to financial business at this time. Nine A, discussion and approval of the March 2023 cash report. Is Treasurer Fisher on the line, or Tammy, will you be doing the presentation?
Mayor, the will has been excused, and Tammy will.
Okay.
Present the cash report.
Are you on, Tammy?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Yes, I am on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So before you is the cash report for March 31st, 2023, and we have an ending cash balance of $12,128,706.90. This is an increase for the month of $170,745.66. And that brings us to a year-to-date excess of revenues over expenditures of $2260,314.68. And during the month of March, we had two unusual or significant items. The first, we purchased six new speedboards, and the total purchase for that was $28,632. And you'll find that check in the check register. And then the second significant item is the health premiums may look higher this month. Due to timing and February being a short month, February's bill was received at the beginning of March, and then March's bill was due. So there are two months of health premiums paid this month for a total expense of $17,180.45.
So before we get to questions for CFO Tammy Silva, I need a motion to approve the March cash report.
I'll make a motion to approve the March cash report.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Let me ask each trustee if they have any questions for CFO Tammy Silva. Mayor Pro Tempecheco.
I have none.
Trustee Lewis.
I, I do. Good evening, Tammy.
Good evening, Trustee Lewis.
On page, I guess it's 101 in our packet, Statement of Revenue and Expenditures. It's the page right before the check register. And looking at our year-to-date revenue budget and cash basis year-to-date, two areas that were really, really off in revenue are capital project infrastructure and capital project buildings. Can you tell me what's going on there, explain that a little bit?
Yes. So Mayor, Trustee Lewis, trustees, the reason that we are low on that, there's a couple of reasons. So in the capital project, both the infrastructure and the buildings, these are where our capital appropriations from the state are housed. And these are multi-year project, or they're multi-year agreements. Some of them we received as early as 2020, fiscal year 2021, some we've received in '22, some in '23. And so because of that, we have money, and they all last somewhere between three and four years. So we have money that we can expend within a year, or if the project takes longer, we can have it go over multiple years. And so because we try and get these projects done as quickly as possible, we always budget for us expending and receiving all of the income in the fiscal year. However, based on, depending on what's going on with contracting, contractors, and just how quickly we're able to do the projects, that isn't always the case, and that, that is definitely what you're seeing here. So some of these projects are expiring June 30th of 2023, and we will receive the revenue by the end of this fiscal year. But some of those projects, if we do not complete them, you will see them budgeted in the next year. And so that, those two budgeted numbers can sometimes seem a little high if we have multiple years to spend and then receive the reimbursements.
Okay. And so if we don't expend the money this year, or we don't get the capital project done, we'll put the whole budget, the whole budgeted amount into next year, even if 50% of it's completed? Am I understanding that correctly?
So Mayor, Trustee Lewis, trustees, that is correct. So oftentimes, if they're bigger projects that we can expend, or once the project has started, it's going to go quickly, and everything is going to be expended quickly. If we start something towards the end of a fiscal year, you will see that overlap as well. But yes, that is correct. We will. Anything that is remaining, they are larger projects, and if we did not get through it this, at the end of this year, we will budget to complete the whole project in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. I have no further questions.
All right. Trustee Benavides?
Yes. So let's see, in the budget report, page 96, ending cash balance $12,128,706.90. I think that is supposed to be the same as on the next page, 97, the ending cash balance, but that, I think there might be a small error there. Do you agree, Tammy? So I see $12,108,000.
Well, that, that page was corrected. If it wasn't corrected in your iPad, it has been corrected. It is 128.
Okay.
Correct, Tammy?
Mayor, Trustee Benavides, that is correct. It has been corrected, and the number that you see on page 96 is correct. I will make sure that that number is updated and that page is updated for Danielle, for the packet that goes up onto the website.
Okay, no problem. And so one more thing. So, you know, we had a presentation about our audit report by Mrs. Hade Emile today, and in her report, she had a number called cash and investments of, of $9,814, sorry, $9,814,164. And this was at the end of June of 30th, 2022.
Right.
So this doesn't align with, with your cash report for, for March, but it, but where would I find that number if it was, if this was June? Where would I find it under this table?
So, Mayor, Trustee Benavides, trustees, that is correct. It's not going to match because when they audit, they actually audit pretty much a year back. So her audit, the audit that was completed and that she spoke about was from July 1, 2021 through ending June 30th, 2022.
Yes.
And so to see that number, we would have to go back to the cash report, June 30th, 2022. However, if she was talking about straight cash, that will match. If she was, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly the, the term she used, but if she was talking about, there's three different reports that are in the audit report. There's a cash basis, modified accrual, and full accrual basis. So depending on which basis she mentioned, it may tie exactly. If she was talking about the modified accrual or the full accrual basis, there will be a little bit of difference, which I can show you, but it will not match the cash report. It'll match the report in our system because that takes into account some of the different accruals that we have at the year end and year beginning.
Okay. And follow on to that, and you can email me with this, because you might not have the answer. So, so in her report, she called it cash plus investments. What investments would that be?
So Mayor, Trustee Benavides, trustees, so we have our cash account at the Bank of Albuquerque, and then the investments she's speaking of are the, they are called the LGIP, and that is the New Mexico Local Government Investment Pool Investments. And so we have some of our money in the LGIP account so that we can gain some interest on the money that we have until we use that. And so those, when she's saying cash and investments, it's the total, and that is the total that you would see. So taking this report and looking at it, the $12 million that we have, we have about $6 million that's sitting in our Bank of Albuquerque account, and we have about $6 million sitting in our LGIP account so that we can gain some interest in that money that we aren't using at this moment.
Are, are they like CDs or something like that, or?
So Mayor, Trustee Benavides, trustees, it's not like a CD. I can actually send you some information on it. So governments are very limited to the type of investments that they can do. This is one of the investments that we are able to do, and I can send you the information on exactly what type of accounts they are and the yield on it and how that all works. I can get that information together for you.
Yeah, thank you. That would be good. I, just curious. I don't see it as an issue. I'm just curious. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Trustee Radnovich?
Tammy, you never cease to amaze me. Good, good job answering all these questions. I just have one question. It's on page 97, and, whoops, and it's line, it's, it's the item 40410, which is General Obligation Bonds Reserve, and it shows a, an encumbered amount of $71,000. Did, did we encumber money for one of the bonds? I just didn't understand.
Okay. Mayor, Trustee Radnovich, trustees, so the encumbered column is when it's just, when that money's already spoken for. So for the 401, that is our general obligation bond, and the reason you're seeing a negative $71,000 is because our GO bond principal payment comes out in August. So it comes out at the very beginning of the fiscal year, and the money that is used to pay that principal payment is from the money we receive from property taxes. And we receive property taxes throughout the year. So that number is often negative until we get to the end of the fiscal year. So when it comes to June 30th, we will see how much we received in property taxes for the full year, and we hope to see that number either drop to zero or become a positive number. And what that would mean is that we received more property taxes this year than the amount of our bond principal payment. However, most of the time, that is not the case, and that is why we have the 410 General Obligation Bond Reserve Fund right below it, because we offset that. So if that number were, if we were to end the fiscal year right now, today, and have that negative $71,000, what we would do is we would transfer out $71,000 from the 410 fund into the 401 fund to zero out that fund, and it starts at zero every year.
I see. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Trustee, Mayor Pro Tem and Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. We're now gonna move to item 10, Public Hearings. I don't know. I guess, okay, there's somebody's cellphone. Public Hearings 10A, LL 23-01. A request by Los Rancho's Brewing LLC, DBA Hops Brewery, 6897 Fourth Street Northwest, Los Rancho's, Albuquerque, New Mexico, for a small brewer liquor license, application number 1244749, New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Department. The property is located in the C1 zone in the Fourth Street character area, 6897 Fourth Street Northwest, and is legally known as tract 1888, Lot B, MRGCD map number 27, Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as filed in the Office of Bernalillo County Clerk circa October 1, 1980. The property contains 1.286 acres or less. Before we get started, I would ask each trustee for full disclosure of real or potential conflicts of interest with this item of business. Mayor Pro Tem, Trustee Pacheco.
I have none.
Trustee Lewis.
I have none.
Trustee Benavides.
None.
Trustee Radnovich.
I have none.
All participants who signed up to speak on this item of business, please stand. Attorney Jamie Dawes will swear you in.
Mr. Scholl? Maida?
Maida.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Uh, the applicant will now be provided an opportunity to speak. Please approach the podium, state your name. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Director, Maida Rubin, please present the application. I'm sorry, I missed you.
Thank you, Mayor, I thought you were letting me off the hook. So Mayor and trustees, the application before you is a request by Los Rancho's Brewing LLC, doing business as Hops Brewery, uh, for a small brewer liquor license. The property is located at sixty-eight ninety-seven Fourth Street Northwest, and is Zone C-one. The applicant intends to open a brewery and brew pub to dispense alcohol with a small brewer liquor license with on-premise consumption and package sales. The C-one zone lists food and alcohol service as a permissive use with the following timeframe restrictions. Alcohol sales between twelve AM and two AM is a conditional use, and alcohol sales between two AM and eight AM is prohibited. The distance waiver is not required, or a distance waiver is not required for the proposed license premises as the closest distance to a church or school is beyond three hundred feet. The request is consistent with the twenty thirty-five master plan, uh, as cited in your planning report. Uh, and with that, the department recommends approval of LL twenty-three dash oh one, with the findings included in the planning report. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, before we get to questions, I'm going to allow the applicant to come forward. The applicant will now be provided an opportunity to speak. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Uh, Mayor, trustees, uh, staff, thanks for having me tonight, appreciate it. Uh, my name is Jim Schul, I live at eighty-four twenty-five Quaterlode Trail, uh, Northwest. Um, I'm the owner of Hops Brewery, well, half-owner, my wife's not here, so I said owner, but, um, I'm sorry. And, uh, um, we are relocating, um, our brewing facility. We started this process up in Nob Hill, and, uh, for, uh, different reasons, we need a, a bigger place, a new place to brew, and so that's why we are moving to this location.
Okay. Then at this time, uh, do the trustees have any questions for Mr. Schul at this time? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Schul, so is this, is this only going to be a production facility, or are you going to have, um, sort of retail, everything there, just like you do at your other location?
It's gonna be both.
So, and you're gonna, it'll be two locations?
Yes. Kind of the reason for that is we do, uh, we do not have a location, uh, currently that's big enough to have our equipment out of brew, and hopefully, we're hoping to get some bigger equipment, and, uh, and so we'll have that room at this place. Um, our other place, we're not going to disturb, um, but we, um, we have a pretty severe parking problem, and on Friday, uh, a Thursday, Friday, sometimes, um, Saturday night, uh, you can see people pull in, not find a place to park and leave. So we're thinking that, that we wanna, uh, we wanna change our little, um, environment there, but, but we got a lot of people that would like to, uh, rent it for, uh, special events and stuff. Parking's still gonna be kind of an issue for that, but if we do, um, shuttles and that kind of stuff, we can maybe do that. Um, and, and I haven't really done that in the past, 'cause I hate to, uh, disturb, um, the regular customers, um, you know, that, that want to come, you know, they drive all the way down, and they bring a friend from out of town, and we're having, um, a special event. So if we had a place that we could, um, send them up the street, um, get, get, you know, the same good beer, um, that's kind of our idea behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the governing body? Go ahead.
Yep. Will you have food at the new location?
Yeah, we will, we do not have a kitchen plan right now, but we will start with us of food trucks. We kinda have to do a little bit of a time, um, budget permitting. But there will be food there, um, uh, we just might not be doing that. And, and when we do do food, we're, uh, trying to come up with a, uh, barbecue concept. I don't wanna compete with what we do, um, up the street, so it will be a completely, uh, different menu. There'll be a few things that are popular things that we'll probably do there as well.
Any other questions from the governing body? Go right ahead.
I apologize. Are you gonna do anything outdoors?
Yes, there'll be some patio areas up front, uh, next to Fourth Street, and on the, uh, south side of the building, in between where the, uh, uh, CBD store is. There'll be a little, uh, um, area there that's, um, adjacent to the two garage doors, the new garage doors that we put in, where we replaced the other garage doors.
And, and just, uh, general question with regard to parking, will the parking be in that parking lot there?
There'll be some there, and then, and then behind that gate. Um, it's a one point two six acre property, so we'll have a lot more parking. We've already talked to, um, uh, Dan's, um, they close at, uh, six o'clock, they're not open on, um, Sundays, so, and then there's parking in the street now with, with, uh, what you guys did. So we're, you know, we'll be in a lot better spot, uh, parking-wise, we believe, than, than where we are now.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, before I let Mr. Schul have closing comments, you might wanna sit down for a moment, there is one person who wanted to speak. Christian Reedy, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Lopez and trustees. My name is Christian Reedy, eighty-six forty-two Rio Grande Boulevard. My support for this is twofold. First of all, I've, I've known Jim since the eighties, uh, and, and his wife even way longer than that, and he's done business in many different facets in and around the North Valley for many, many years, has a great reputation, serves great beer, and makes a great sandwich, and that's very important. So, uh, without a doubt, a hundred percent, he's a, he's a trustworthy and reputable man. Uh, secondly, I really believe that a brew pub in that area is something that the village could really benefit from. Coming from the automotive world myself, I don't see much, a lot of what we have down there now is auto parts and boats and tranny shops and, you know, necessary things, but not what you're gonna wanna want to walk through a village, and I think you're all aware of that, so I think this would be a great step and a great location. He's right there, he's in that, in, in that area, the primary with the lights, like you mentioned, not far from the existing parking, so it'd be walking distance already, plus the additional space. So I just think it's an ideal fit for what the village is trying to accomplish in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Schul, do you have any closing remarks that you would like to make? Okay, the floor is now closed for comments. I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Do we need to make a motion, Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry, you do need to make a motion. You, I need a motion to approve LL twenty-three dash oh one.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve LL twenty-three dash oh one.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. The floor is now closed for comments. I call for the question, I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Mayor, Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes, and, and Jim, I'm really happy that you're, uh, expanding and, and expanding in our village, it's awesome.
Congratulations, Mr. Schul, the motion carries unanimously. Okay, fantastic. Item B, LL twenty-three dash oh two, a request by NNI Margaritas LLC, DBA Sadie's Cocktails, for a wholesale liquor license, application number one two four three four two five, New Mexico Regulation and Licensing Department. The property is Zone C-one, is located at six two three zero Fourth Street Northwest, Suite B, Los Rancho's de Albuquerque, eight seven one oh seven, within the Fourth Street character area, and is legally described as Track C-one, plat of Track C-one and C-two, lands of Blanchard, situated within projected section twenty-eight, Township eleven north, range three east, New Mexico Principal Meridian, Village of Los Rancho's de Albuquerque, Bernalillo County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Bernalillo County Clerk on May sixth, two thousand four. The property contains two point six seven seven one acres, more or less. Before we get started, I would like to ask each trustee for a full disclosure of real or potential conflicts of interest with this item of business. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
I have none.
Trustee Lewis.
I have none.
Trustee Benavides.
I have none.
Trustee Radnovich.
None.
All participants who signed up to speak on this item of business, please stand. Attorney Jamie Dawes will, will you please swear them in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Pleasure. Planning and zoning director, Maida Rubin, please present the application.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Uh, the application before you is a request by NNI Margaritas LLC, doing business as Sadie's Cocktails, for a wholesale liquor license, uh, in the C-one zone in the Fourth Street character area. The property is located at sixty-two thirty, Fourth Street Northwest, Suite B, uh, and contains two point six, uh, seven seven one acres more or less. Uh, the C-one zone lists food and alcohol service as a permissive use with the following timeframe restrictions. Alcohol sales between twelve AM and two AM is a conditional use, and alcohol sales between two AM and eight AM is prohibited. Uh, a distance waiver is not required for the proposed license premise as the closest distance to a church or school is beyond three hundred feet, and this request is consistent with the twenty thirty-five master plan as cited in your planning report. With that, the department recommends approval of LL twenty-three oh two, uh, with the findings, uh, listed in your planning report, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Rubin. At this time, before we get to questions from the governing body, I'm gonna ask the applicant to now be provided an opportunity to speak. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes. Of course, one, one at a time.
Oh, one at a time?
One at a time.
I can probably answer most of it then. Hi, I'm Nick Stafford, seven twelve Sola Road. How's everybody doing tonight? Um, so this is pretty straightforward, this is just, or like, a location to buy from a wholesaler and sell to distributor. That's pretty much it. We're gonna store some inventory on location, we're gonna take our inventory and then sell it to a distributor. Um, there'll be no dispensing, so we won't be selling any alcohol there. That's about it.
Okay, next person. Or did he say it all?
That's about, yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay. We do have one person who wanted to speak. Uh, I understand, Christian Reedy, you'd like to speak again? Come on ahead. Come forward, Mr. Reedy.
Christian Reedy, eighty, eighty-six forty-two Rio Grande. No, I ju, I just, I mean, we're talking third generation of Staffords here, and if, you know, if they can't get supported by their, their hometown, where can they get support? That's all I wanted to say to great people, and, and we need to support them in any way we can. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Stafford, do you have any closing remarks? Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Trustees for the applicant and/or for Maida Rubin?
I do have a question for Mr. Stafford.
Hi.
Hi. So, uh, you're applying for a wholesaler license. So are these going to be, is this going to be product that you all are producing and...
No. This is product that we, we will be buying from a distributor, oh, I'm sorry, from a, from a manufacturer, and then wholesaling to distributor. Um, we're, we have a margarita out on the market now, it's an RTD, ready-to-drink cocktail. What we're gonna do is simply purchase it, inventory it, sell it to distributor, and they'll take it to market from there.
Okay. And, and, so no dispensing at all?
No dispensing.
Okay.
We're just gonna, we'll store some on-premise, um, that's it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go.
Any other questions from the governing body? Go ahead.
One question, but it, you may not answer, and, and maybe Ann might have the answer. Is there, will there be any gross receipts taxes when you're selling to a distributor?
Um, I don't, I, I believe so, yeah. Yes.
Do you know?
Uh, Mayor Trustee Benavides, I don't know the answer, but I would imagine that any sale require, um, creates gross receipts. It's not, and maybe Trustee Pacheco knows, but it's not a food?
Yeah, I believe there's an, a liquor excise tax that we pay, fro, when we sell to distributor.
Well, no, I'm talking about gross receipts.
Oh, yeah, I, I, same, I believe that we pay that.
There might not be any, though.
I don't believe there is gross receipts tax.
No gross receipts on liquor?
No, that is, um, that is seen when they...
Retail.
When it's sold to the retail, gotcha. It'd be double taxed.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, any other questions from the governing body?
I have a question.
Right ahead.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Stafford. And great business, too, I would say. So will you have, I know you have deliveries of food and probably liquor, too, uh, at Sadie's, and big trucks do come and deliver that stuff to you.
Correct.
Are, is this gonna increase, is the amount of vehicular traffic, because of your distribution, going to increase the traffic, uh, industrial traffic, like eighteen-wheelers and larger trucks, at your facility?
Yes, but only slightly. We, our distributor will buy from us probably monthly, so we'll, we'll purchase it monthly, and we'll sell to distributor monthly. Um, so, nothing noticeable.
Okay, I, I'm asking the question because of the neighbors and...
Yeah.
And the traffic that it might generate.
It, it shouldn't be noticeable, really.
Okay. Any other questions for the governing body? Okay, I need a motion to approve LL twenty-three dash oh two.
I'll make a motion to approve LL twenty-three dash oh two.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion now from the governing body? Apparently not. The floor is now closed for comments. I'm gonna call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich.
Yes.
Congratulations, it's approved. You bet. Great business, by the way. Item C, discussion and approval to adopt ordinance two-nine-four, TA twenty-three dash oh one amended text, section nine point two point one-two, C-dash-one retail commercial zone, summarized as follows. N, section parentheses eight, uses, reduce multifamily dwelling unit density, add, in parentheses, adult or child, to daycare facilities use, increase ground floor retail percentage requirement for mixed-use development, and reduce density, add mixed-use development with a commercial but non-retail component as a conditional use, reduce single-family detached townhouse and condominium density, add parentheses beverage to food and alcohol service use, change dry cleaning from permissive to condit, conditional use, modify language for light manufacturing use, in section parentheses E, height limitations, lower height from three stories, parentheses thirty-nine feet, to two stories, parentheses twenty-six feet, allow covered patios or balconies on the second floor to exceed sixty percent of the first floor enclosed area, and to extend up to five feet beyond the first floor footprint if abutting Fourth Street Northwest. Condense, parentheses E, parentheses one, comma, parentheses two, comma, and parentheses three into parentheses E, parentheses one, semicolon, condense, parentheses E, parentheses three, parentheses small a, and parentheses small b, into parentheses E, parentheses one, parentheses small a, lower chimney height from forty-two to twenty-nine feet. Planning and zoning director, Rudin, Rubin, please recap the ordinance for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Uh, the request before you is, uh, brought forth by the Village of Los Rancho's for text amendments to, uh, section nine point two point one-two, uh, C-one commercial zone. These proposed text amendments came before you for advertisement last month, and now they are back before you for potential adoption. These, uh, sent, these changes center largely on reducing the height and density in the C-one zone for residential uses. Uh, I'm happy going, to go into detail on all of these changes if you would like. The department recommends approval of TA twenty-three oh one with fine... The department recommends approval of TA 2301 with findings as included in the planning report, and with that, I will stand for questions.
Before we get to questions and discussions from the governing body, I need a motion to approve the adoption of ordinance number 294.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 294.
I need a second.
I will second.
Now, is there any discussion from the governing body? I'll go trustee by trustee. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
I just would like to ask, Mayor, if this is exactly the same language that came before us at the previous meeting, nothing has changed, correct?
Correct. Mayor and Trustee Pacheco, this is exactly the same language that was presented at last month's meeting.
Thank you.
Trustee Lewis?
That was the only question I had, so.
Trustee Benavides?
I have none.
Trustee Radnovich?
I have a couple or a few. The, and this is, I mean, I read it carefully and I read it last month. I think I found one mistake, and it's about the dry cleaning. I believe it still says permissive use on the table.
What page is that, George?
Oh, boy. Let's see.
Mayor and Trustee Radnovich, if I may, I did notice that also, and I checked the previous packet, and I believe it never made that change to conditional into the Planning Commission version either. So every version that has gone before, you all and the Planning Commission, I don't believe included the intended conditional use for dry cleaning.
Can we change that in our, in our motion today?
Yes.
Thanks. I have a few other questions.
Excuse me just a second, George. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. I mean, we don't want anything to change this.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe so. Trustee Lewis and Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, George.
That's okay. Thanks. There are a couple things that I also wanted to maybe note for the future, because we've talked about, you know, this is just to, you know, approve the changes, but that there's likely going to be more changes in the future. And one of my, one of the thoughts I have about that is on page... 152. And I like cars as much as the next guy. I really, you know, love my car, and, you know, I like nice cars. And, but, there's some things on here that I think we really need to talk about. One of them is on, well, there's no line, but in the table under auto-oriented uses, auto parts and supplies, including service stations. While the brewery is a great idea for revitalizing Fourth Street, I'm not sure another service station would be. And I'm not trying to, you know, I know there's property rights issues with me saying that, but we want to encourage the kinds of businesses that are going to make Fourth Street a different kind of place than it is now, and a better place from a retail environment perspective. So I think we need to talk about that. The other one that I thought we want to talk about in the future is a couple lines down from that, construction yards and commercial storage facilities. I'm not sure that that has a place on certain parts of Fourth Street anyway, especially the part that's already been completed between Plants of the Southwest and Pueblo Solano. And then the last one is self-storage units. We just got done, you know, losing some, some storage units at the Village Center, and I'm not sure we'd want to have something like that that's kind of deadens spaces as opposed to enlivening them in, on Fourth Street, in at least certain parts of Fourth Street that aren't in the Village Center. And so I think we really need to look at those in the, in the future. Another one that I was wondering about, and I wasn't part of the Citizen Advisory Committee, but, and I'm not suggesting, again, that we're changing this now, it's just an opportunity for me to talk about it. But what was the thinking behind the balconies that may extend five feet beyond the building footprint? Because that seems very odd to me.
Mayor and Trustee Radnovich, so the thinking behind that was to allow for, it was a couple-fold. So it was hopefully to help create more presence on the street a little bit with architectural massing changes and that kind of thing. The stipulation continues that it cannot be supported from the ground in the setback, because we do want to keep that clear of structures. This was also proposed due to the fact that it may extend the amount of area that potentially a business could have upstairs with outdoor seating, and it was kind of a COVID-driven recommendation.
I see. It, architecturally speaking, it could be odd, could be a little weird, and that's why I bring that up. And maybe someday we'll have some design guidelines for Fourth Street and other places, but it just seems a bit architecturally strange to me. But I, but what you just said makes sense, so thank you for trying to answer that. Yeah, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. I want to state for the record that there was no one who signed up to speak on this matter. Therefore, the floor is now closed for comments. I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Benavides?
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. The village should be very proud of what the Citizens Advisory Committee did. Very proud. Item 11, New Business. A, Discussion and Approval of Resolution Number 2023-04-01, a resolution rescinding the approval of the loan agreement with the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, parentheses, MRGCD, for agricultural loan for improving water efficiency measures. Administrator Simon?
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Yes, the village approved a project at the Del Norte Open Space to increase the, to add infrastructure that increased the value of the property to include trimming of the trees, making the land more accessible to farming, removing debris, and creating a more efficient irrigation method at that property. The funds were made up partly by our own general fund, as well as up to $500, sorry, $500,000 of Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District funds, in the shape of a loan that was a low-interest loan at 2%. In starting the project, staff quickly became aware of a very important problem, that we needed to follow federal procurement guidelines. Those are very onerous, and it became very difficult for our small staff to adhere to all of the requirements needed to apply for those funds. So we looked around and saw that the funds that we had set aside in the Rescue Act for water irrigation were perfectly ample, and we were able to transfer and use those funds instead of borrowing at 2% interest, and it made more sense. We spoke to our friends at the Conservancy District to see if this would be burdensome to rescind this ordinance, and they were completely understanding. The, the terms were onerous, and they understood they're going to find other users for those funds, and were perfectly okay. So before you is a resolution rescinding the grant agreement with the Conservancy District.
Thank you. Before we get to questions from the governing body and also public comment, I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-04-01.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-04-01.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion from the governing body? Okay, good. We do have one individual signed up for public comment. Mr. Joe Craig, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Joe Craig, 505 Calle del Barrio, excuse me, Northwest. I would urge you to rescind this as, as you are voting on this. I, I got an if-for-all request with the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy. This is an awful contract. I've never read one that was so bad. We don't need this type of money from them. Our, currently, I'm disheartened that our open space, the trees are dying, our cathedral trees, the big cathedral trees are dying. We are not being irrigated on the Del Norte space. I, I don't know, we've turned this in, it's completely turned under, there is no, planning's out there, we have no wildlife, it's awful. We need desperately to get some water into the trees. This is an urban forest. It is not a farm. It is being managed, perhaps as a farm. One of the things that you mentioned when you approved this a year ago is that you did not have a plan. I would urge you to relook at this plan as you relook at, at the money. Please vote against, or please rescind this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig. The floor is now closed for comments. I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Benavides?
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item B, Discussion and Approval in accordance with the Village of Los Ranchos 2013 Codified Ordinances, Chapter 9, Section 9.2.2, Planning and Zoning Commission, parentheses, A, Membership. The commission shall consist of seven, parentheses, seven members, who shall be appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of the members of the governing body. Planning and Zoning Commissioner for 2023, 2024, Mr. Robert Martinez. Mr. Martinez, would you please come forward? I want to introduce you to the audience and to the trustees. Robert, we have a resume of you in the packet. Did you want to tell us anything that you want the trustees to know about you and why you wanted to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
First and foremost, Mayor Lopez and trustees, thank you for giving me the honor to be in front of you guys. As you can tell by my resume, I have a lot to give, because I walked a beautiful walk in life. I'm originally from Ranchos de Taos, irrigation, mardomos, which we have here. I'm from Santa Fe, moved there in the 60s, moved out 10 years ago to come over here to be close to my grandkids, but saw the development of Santa Fe going in such a very unique way, even though I was a realtor and a surveyor, I was just a cog in the cogwheel. You have a beautiful village here. I consider myself a part of this village, and I would like to try to help balance and give my input that may help the future of what we want to, and I consider to be a beautiful little community.
Thank you very much, Robert. I'm going to turn it over to Planning and Zoning Director, Maida Rubin. You may sit down.
Okay.
I don't have anything prepared to say, other than I have a lot of confidence in this appointment, and I look forward to working potentially with, with our new commissioner.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Martinez as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner for 2023, 2024.
Motion to approve Mr. Robert Martinez, what did you say? I'm sorry. What else?
As a Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Commissioner for 2023, 2024.
I need a second.
I heartily second that.
Is there any discussion from the governing body?
Sorry, Mr. Martinez, I just have a, a short question. How long have you lived in the village?
10 years.
Nice. All right, that's my only question.
Thank you very much. I'm going to, any more questions? Okay, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Benavides?
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich?
Yes.
Congratulations, Robert. You're now in the Planning and Zoning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very good. Item C, Discussion and Approval to Allow Mayor Donald T. Lopez to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Parametrics, the awarded offer of the Request for Proposals, RFP Number 2021-02, for on-call consultants for the comprehensive transportation analysis, presented to the Board of Trustees and approved by Resolution Number 2022-10-04 on October 12, 2022. Ms. Rinaldi is not here, but I think that she provided a memorandum with a comprehensive explanation of all the supporting documentation in the packet. I need a motion, before we get into any questions, I need a motion to approve the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Parametrics.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-10-04.
I need a second.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor trustees, this isn't a resolution, this is just approving the professional services agreement. So, Trustee Lewis, if you wouldn't mind restating your motion to approve the PSA. Yes, you approved this resolution in October. We were deciding it in the header that we went into agreement for the RFP at that time.
Then I, I make a motion to approve to allow Mayor Lopez to enter into a professional services agreement with Parametrics.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Now, let's go trustee by trustee. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco, any questions?
No questions.
Trustee Lewis?
If I understand your packet correctly, let me find my notes here. Here we go. Okay, so... I want to make sure that everybody's aware that this, their scope of work includes attending and presenting at no more than two meetings of the Board of Trustees, attending and participating slash presenting at two public meetings, one during each phase of the study, attending and participating in up to three community events in developing and distributing a public input survey. So that was something I liked in this agreement. As I understand this, then this, there's, there's eight tasks. This agreement is for the first five tasks, which is coordination and project management, public outreach, traffic data collection and assembly, operational assessment, other transportation issues. Okay, and then, when that is completed, then we will discuss tasks six, seven, and eight.
Correct.
Okay. Then I just, I understand it clearly, and I, I support it. Thank you.
Trustee Benavides?
I have no questions.
Trustee Radnovich?
No questions.
Okay, I'm going to call for the question, call for the roll call vote. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Benavides?
Yes.
Trustee Radnovich? Motion carries unanimously.
Abstain.
What's that?
Abstain.
Oh, abstain. Sorry. Sorry. Okay. Item 12 is trustee informal discussion. Mayor Protem, Trustee Pacheco?
A couple of these I already talked about was just the use of the park on Easter Sunday, which was great to see. And I know that a lot of people that attended the Easter egg hunt on Saturday actually came from other communities other than the Village of Los Ranchos, which was great. Brought people into our community, so that's awesome. The speedboards, I noticed a new one out on Rio Grande, and I see that there is also, it looks like it is a traffic counter. I don't know what those, those things are. Are they counters?
Yeah. In the escrow.
The what?
In the escrow.
Uh, no, just right, right here.
Oh, there's some.
Just like, literally, on. Just like, literally, almost outside the door here. So great to see those. I'm assuming we're putting those in strategic locations where we've had issues. These look permanent. Are they fairly permanent?
Mayor, trustee Pacheco, they are mobile, so we can move them around.
Okay.
They look permanent, but they're mobile.
They do look permanent. That's awesome. Also, just wanted to comment on the budget session that we had a week or two ago. I thought it was excellent. You know, I've been a part of these now. I think this is my fourth one, and I just thought that we accomplished a lot during the budget session, and I just wanted to, to thank everybody for that. That's all I got.
Trustee Lewis.
Thank you. First, I'd like to extend my congratulations to Danielle, and to tell you, you do a tremendous job. We would, we'd be lost without you, so thank you very much. I would be lost without you sitting here jabbing me in the ribs every now and then, so thank you for that. I also, too, would like to congratulate the trustees and everybody for the budget session. I thought it was excellent. I think they're just such a tremendous improvement from how we used to do things in the old days in hand. Congratulations to everybody on a, I think, what's going to be a very good budget, and to staff as well. Thank you.
Trustee Benavides.
I appreciate you too, Danielle. I don't want to be the only one that doesn't say that.
Thank you, trustee.
But, but, let's, let's talk about public comment. I'm going to put, put the limelight on here. So when I walked in, I forgot to, to look at the signup sheets. So, you know, the, the instructions are if you can do public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. And the agenda items are back there, what you, and you sign up for. Is that, so far, I'm correct, right?
Mayor and trustee, Benavides trustees, yes. So we have one signup sheet for just general participation, those folks who want their name on the record. We have a signup sheet for those who wish to speak under general public comment, which is at the beginning of our meeting, and that is three minutes on items not on the agenda. We have several signup sheets for all other items that we ask for public comment germane to the topic in which item of business we are at, and that allows individuals to speak for two minutes.
Okay, so I'm looking at the agenda, and I'm worried there still might be some confusion on this. So I'm looking at the agenda, and item six is presentations. Do we accept public comment on that? Okay.
So trustee Benavides, in our public participation, I did make that clear. I believe it's either on page five or six of your packet. That does indicate that we do not accept public comment under certain items. One would be presentations, one would be minutes, trustee informal, financial business, but all other items that we do accept comment, those signup sheets are at the front, or individuals can email me prior to the meeting, and I can get them on the list to speak.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking. Okay, so I'm looking at number, on page six. And is that, is that what you wrote out? Is that what you're talking about? Or was it something else?
In your public participation.
All right, so it says, general public comment will not be taken on items not listed on the agenda, and speakers will be allowed three minutes. No action occur on these items. Opportunity to comment during meetings on specific items is at the discretion of residing officer. Must be germane to the business. Individuals given two minutes. It doesn't say anything about the reports.
Procedural items. I think if you scroll, go down a little bit midway on that, it does say under procedural items, and then I provided examples.
Maybe it's not in my packet, but.
It should be on all packets. I'm sorry.
Point it out to me. I must be looking in the wrong place.
She's certified.
Right. Yeah, who am I to question? Okay, so next, next thing I wanted to talk about is, well, I pretty much talked about the barn parking lot, so won't do that. You know, I, I've, I've been asking about a plan for the AgroNature Center, a long-range plan. It is, it is a, you know, it's a treasure for us to have this, and there are so many different directions we can go in, you know, and events are very popular here in the village. Anytime we have an event that's agriculturally related, it seems to be extremely popular. And sometimes we're a victim of how popular that is. But I just, I just like to see all that kind of wrapped up into a plan. And, you know, I'm reminded about, about the quote from Dwight Eisenhower, plans are worthless, planning is essential, right? Plans always fall apart, but, but when you, when you're doing the plan, you think about things, and you have to be willing to change it. So that's all I have on that, and that's all I have for the informal discussion.
Okay, trustee Radnovich.
I had a couple things, mayor and trustees, audience. Last month, I talked about how we should slow down on our projects, and I've been attending the CAC meetings with Maida and Ann for the Village Center for, I don't know, two months maybe. And I don't really know, know who gains from rushing projects, because it seems like we rush projects a lot, just to get them done. And, and I don't really understand that. And after hearing Ann and Maida talk about how busy you guys are, and I know part of it's the planner that you're missing, I just think we ought to slow down, and my sense is that the village just kind of works, bowls ahead, and doesn't always talk to constituents. And so I, and I brought this up repeatedly since I've been trustee, and I think we do need to do more talking, more discussion with constituents. And I don't know that, what trustee Benavides just said, and what, what you, Danielle, put in our packet that explains that, but I think we need to find better ways to do that. And the CAC is a great example. The CAC is a really good example of listening. I, I think we need to find others, because I don't think we're listening enough. And I think people in the village have a sense, and I've talked to people about this, they've talked to me about it, I should say, that we just bull ahead, and there's decisions being made, and nobody gets to, to be a part of that decision-making. So I think maybe that's being made because it, that's happening, because it's, it's, it's a quick decision-making process to just keep things moving. And I want to, I want to say, I think we, I think we need to slow that down a bit. The, the second thing that I wanted to say was, if you look at our budgets, everything we're doing, and I, and I get that the village put off road maintenance for a while, but everything in the, in the budget, the lion's share of the budgets, are road maintenance. And, you know, I, I, I get that. I don't think our roads are in horrible shape in many cases, and even if they are a little bit, say gravel roads, for example, you know, it kind of adds to the character of the village. And so, and you see that in places like Santa Fe and other parts of, of New Mexico and the Southwest. And so, you know, I think we ought to spend more money and time on projects like the AgroNature Center than just roadways. And I get that roadways are important, but I, I think that's what we're really about. We're about that sense of place that makes the village a special place. And I think Hank Kelly said at one of our CAC meetings, you know, he thinks that the, 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 how did he put it? The, the, the village, I'll say, I don't remember exactly how he put it, but the village is this area that the Village Center, I mean, that the Village Hall is in. It's the bigger lots and the, and the agriculture, and that kind of great walk, drive, or bicycle ride down Rio Grande Boulevard. I think it's also about Fourth Street, and that's because of an annex that we did many years ago. But I, I think we need to spend more time and money on what makes Los Rancho's Los Rancho's, that sense of place about Los Rancho's. And that figure that's in the range of, you know, $400,000 for the AgroNature Center, for example, and something similar for the Del Norte Open Space should be higher, in a higher percentage than just roadways. So that's my piece for the point.
At this point, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, motion to adjourn the meeting?
I need a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting for April 13, 2023 is now adjourned. Time is 9:20 PM.
All right.